Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Saturday morning meeting of the Richmond Select Board. This is a public informational meeting notice and a public informational meeting. So we can go over what we're going to discuss on town meeting. Before we begin, would anybody care to make a public comment?
I'd like to just correct, we're not going to be discussing this stuff that town may will be voting on it.
Correct. Well, I have a brief public comment. I want to thank Jay for bringing donuts. Make Saturday mornings more doable. Okay, Josh Board, any changes or deletions to today's agenda? Okay. First on our agenda is the Australian ballot informational hearing. Josh, did you want to lead this?
Sure.
Bart?
David, a question and for maybe for Josh, if there are questions, you want people to hold questions until the end or?
Yeah, I'll get to that. Okay, yes. So as David mentioned, we're here to discuss the Australian ballot items for town meeting. We'll discuss the budget first, then we'll talk about the Conservation Reserve Fund and followed up by charitable appropriations. So we'll start off with the budget. I do have a presentation that I'll share. And okay, so a note that the budget this year is being voted on by Australia. Actually, one other thing is I know that this will also be, this recording will be available. I don't see a lot of members of the public with us this morning. However, this will be published by MMC TV by probably Monday or Tuesday of next week. So if anybody wants to view this in the future, they're welcome to do that. So hopefully that will be helpful as people prepare for the Australian ballot. So the budget this year, this year will be voted by Australian ballot because the special meeting in November, the voters voted to move it from a voice vote at town meeting to Australian ballot. So this is the first year outside of COVID when it will be voted by Australian ballot. The preparation of this budget, we typically start in October and have three to four budget meetings once a month, October, November, and into December. And finalize the budget to be presented to the voters. Am I? Are you going to meet them?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can.
Yep.
Oh.
So this year, we've had a particularly challenging budget, thanks in part to about $2 million in expenses due to the FY20, to the 2024 flooding in July. We'll get into that in more detail in the presentation, but the upshot of that was we had to hold seven different budget meetings from October through early January. I'd like to thank the Select Board for all of their time with the additional meetings in the fall and into early winter. Thank the department heads for their tireless efforts on the budget. They actually start this in September to look at their budgets and go through and present it to the Select Board. And there's been many, many revisions over the last several months. And I'd like to also thank all the town residents who came to the budget meetings over the last few months and who will join us today in future meetings to provide feedback on the budget and discuss the budget for FY26. And thank Tony, of course, sort of organizing all of the things these department heads put together in their budgets and all the feedback from residents and from the Select Board. So this is the first of two budget meetings to discuss Australian ballot items. The next meeting will be held on Monday, February 24th at 7:00 PM. Town meeting day is on Tuesday, March 4th. That will actually be your last day to vote in person up at Campbellstown Middle School. Early voting will begin shortly and will be available at the town center and the town clerk's office. I do have a presentation for the budget. I'm going to proceed through the presentation. I'd like you to hold questions until the end. Please note that each slide is numbered, so if you have a question about a particular slide, just jot down that number. We can easily go back to that slide once we're done with the presentation. At the top of some of the pages, you'll see there are notes about where more information can be found in the town report. And the town report is available in PDF format online, and we hope to have printed copies here very shortly.
We're handling the donuts.
They look awful good.
Okay.
That still looks like a wedding cake to me.
The symbol? All right. So today's agenda for the budget portion of the meeting, we'll talk about municipal operations. We'll have a review of reserves and unassigned and restricted funds. We'll look at the FY26 budget overview. Then we'll discuss the use of unassigned and restricted funds in the budget. We'll have a brief conversation about debt service. Then we'll review the budget by department and a review of the Conservation Reserve Fund and Social Services, and then questions. One note on the Conservation Reserve Fund and Social Services portion of this presentation. This is related specifically to how those two will affect the tax rate. They're each voted separately by the voters. We'll get into details about the Conservation Reserve Fund and each social service appropriation in future agenda items today. But for the purposes of this conversation, it's about how will it affect the tax rate, not what will it be used for. I'd like to begin by going over fiscal years. I think it's just helpful to sort of set some basic things that everybody knows what we're talking about.
Could I?
Yeah.
Make well, sure. Although comment?
Yeah.
Unless you've already had it.
We already had it, but.
Oh, yeah, I got it.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's fine.
Just two things that when you're going through the budget and get, talk about the police department, I'm hoping that you will talk about how we came to be where we are today. And on the capital plan, there was a lot of discussion about this fall about a new fire truck and a lot of you know, people against that. And I just kind of want to know where we are for that. So I assume that will all be covered.
Yeah, I mean, I may not cover each one of those extensively in this, but in questions at the end, certainly. So the previous fiscal year was FY24, which began on July 1st, 2023, and ran through June 30th, 2024. Currently, we're in the middle of fiscal year 25, which began on July 1st, 2024, and will end on June 30th, 2025. The budget being voted on is for fiscal year 26, which will begin on July 1st, 2025, and end on June 30th, 2026. A review of municipal operations and individual town departments. We'll start with the Clerk Administration and Finance, which consists of the Town Manager, the Finance Director, the Town Clerk, an Assistant Town Clerk, and an Assistant to the Town Manager. These, these roles operate very closely to manage revenue, payments, payroll, policies, and projects. Planning and zoning has a planning zoning director and a zoning administrator. They issue permits, review and rewrite zoning regulations, staff the Planning Commission and the DRB, and also assist other committees related to planning. And this year, they'll be very busy updating the town plan. Police is scheduled for one full-time chief and four full-time officers and a part-time administrative assistant. The chief is shared with Heinsberg and has been shared for about the last year and a half. So we budget for half a chief. Heinsberg's been budgeting for half a chief. And we've been splitting a chief for the last year and a half, and that kind of came to be because it started out with staffing, the town was short-staffed. We contracted for police services from Heinsberg. At the time that our acting chief resigned and we decided to have a contract for a police chief with Heinsberg, which has been working out very well for the last year and a half and has been included in this budget. The library is staffed with a full-time director and a full-time assistant director who each have 32 hours per week, as well as six part-time employees and one part-time substitute employees. I note that the Richmond Library is governed by the Board of Trustees who are elected by the voters. The Board of Trustees prepare the budget that is to be considered by the voters. All the other department budgets are finalized by the Select Board for presentation to the voters, with the library portion of the budget is finalized by the trustees and is included in the total budget figure that will be voted on by Australian ballot. The Fire Department, we have a chief, an assistant chief, three captains, a lieutenant, and 14 firefighters. It is a volunteer department. However, firefighters do get paid for the hours worked when responding to calls. In the Highway Department, we have a foreman, an assistant foreman, and four drivers and operators. In the winter, they're primarily doing road maintenance, plowing the roads, maintaining equipment and planning summer work. In the summer, they're working on gravel road maintenance, maintaining equipment, highway drainage work, maintaining recreational facilities, larger sidewalk and stormwater projects, and for the last two summers responding to damages from the floods.
What plans?
The Water Resources Department is not included in the budget that's being voted on right now. Their budget is voted on separately in May by the Water and Sewer Commission. That budgeting process will begin in March, as we'll be having several meetings leading up to the annual meeting in May to discuss the budget with the commission. The Water Services Department has approximately 500 accounts located in the Village of Richmond. The department consists of a superintendent, an assistant superintendent, and two full-time staff members. But again, this budget is not voted on, on this ballot item today. Now we'll talk a bit about reserve funds and unassigned and restricted funds. These will become important later on as we talk about how they interact with the budget. Reserve funds function like savings accounts, and they're typically used for larger capital purchases or projects. Unassigned and restricted funds are a combination of underspending and revenue and excess of budgeted revenue. This surplus reverts to unassigned funds and restricted funds. Restricted funds are money that was raised for Highway Department, and it has to stay with the Highway Department even when it's used in future budgets. Unassigned funds are surpluses from other departments. It can be used for any department, including Highway. So reserve funds function like savings accounts. Funds can be added to the reserves yearly from tax revenue, and that amount is decided by the voters. So a good way to think of a reserve fund is if we have a $200,000 piece of equipment for the Highway Department that you know we're going to buy in four years, we might opt to put $50,000 per year into a reserve fund, so that in four years, we have $200,000 pay for that equipment, and that all then goes into the capital plan so that the voters know and the department heads know how we're saving to buy that capital equipment. Reserves can also be funded with non-tax revenue. The Town Center Reserve Fund is funded by rent payments from the tenants in the town center, and the reappraisal fund is funded by the Act 60 reappraisal grant. So as I noted just a few minutes ago, reserves are used mostly for larger capital purchases. The actual use of reserves fluctuate based on the capital plan, and also sometimes they're used for emergencies that fall outside of the scope of budget, which we did do this year. Here's a look at total reserve growth over the last 10 or 12 years. You'll note that we have, has been increasing. Some of that increase is due to the ARPA funding that we received around 22, 23. So there's a bit of a spike there. Another reason for that increase is we've made a shift in the last couple of years from primarily using loans to purchase larger equipment to building up capital reserves to paying cash for that capital equipment to avoid paying excess interest rates. We have a total of 32 reserve funds. As you can see here, it's a bit small type. The reserves on the left are the ones that have more money, and then we have a number of reserves that have a smaller amount of revenue in each of them. In fact, 84% of all money in reserves is in just six reserve funds. As I mentioned, we have about $1 million in the ARPA Reserve Fund. And that was still the ARPA fund at the end of fiscal year 24. In the summer and fall, that got transferred to the Special Projects Reserve Fund due to reporting requirements and spending requirements from ARPA, but we still have that money. It's just in a different fund. We have the Bridgen Culvert Fund for a highway of about $400,000, the Conservation Reserve Fund of about $300,000, the Town Center Maintenance Fund of about $260,000, Record Restoration of $215,000, and the Cemetery Fund of $152,000. Planned uses of the reserve funds in FY26, we have air tanks and turnout gear for fire, safety, and equipment reserve. The Highway Capital Reserve will be used to pay for a dump truck and a pickup truck with a plow. And the library will do some interior painting for $25,000 out of the capital reserve for the library. Contributions to the reserve funds in FY26 include $10,000 to the planning reserve for legal expenses, $180,000 to the fire capital reserve, $175,000 to the Highway Capital Reserve, and $10,000 to the Guard Rail Reserve. So unassigned and restricted funds are a combination of underspending and unbudgeted revenue. So surplus from that reverts back to unassigned funds. As I mentioned earlier, restricted funds is money raised for highway that can only then be used for highway expenses. And unassigned funds are funds that were raised for any other department, and they can be used for any department in the future, including Highway. So a good way to think of unassigned and restricted funds, they're different than the reserves we just talked about. The reserves we talked about are planned for, they're contributed for mostly through taxes during the capital plan with expenses for future years. Whereas unassigned and restricted funds are a result of having extra money at the end of a fiscal year. So think of it this way, if you have a million-dollar budget and at the end of the year, it comes in at $900,000, perhaps due to vacancy savings and staff. Well, the town has still raised $1 million, but only spent $900,000. That extra $100,000 goes into unassigned funds or restricted funds if it comes from the Highway Department. And then the Select Board has discussions each fall as we build the budget about what to do with that money and what to use that money for. The balance can also decrease if we have an excess of spending. So for instance, when we had the floods in this past July, it was about $2 million. A large amount of that came out of unassigned and restricted funds to pay for that flooding, and that was unbudgeted and unplanned. So as we look at the reserve, at the unassigned and restricted funds, the auditors have said that a combined balance of those of about 15% of the annual budget is healthy, and those savings greatly help reduce the need for money in an anticipated crisis or when cash flow is needed. Going on the advice of the auditors, the Select Board in November of 2023 adopted a fund balance policy which stated that they will limit unassigned and restricted funds to 15% of the budget. Anything over that must be put towards emergencies or used towards the budget to reduce taxes in the next fiscal year. So we'll look at unassigned and restricted fund balances as of June 30th, 2024. In the audit, it showed unassigned funds of $1,176,344 and restricted funds of $340,362 for a combined total of about $1.5 million. This represented 31% of the $4.9 million FY25 budget. I do want to make a note here as I was finalizing the presentation, I caught that we have a couple of discrepancies, unfortunately. So the slide here is representative of the final audit. There is an error in the town report where that version overstated restricted funds by about $5,000 because the version of the audit at that time had an error that we caught before we finalized it of $5,000. And when we finalized the budget, we had a combined total of about $1,000 less than in the final audit. So I regret that we had a couple of mistakes, but wanted to be transparent about those. At the end of the day, we have the final audit, which is posted online, and we have a really close number that we set the budget on. So I think it doesn't materially affect anything, but you will notice if you look at those documents closely that there's a couple of discrepancies. So you'll see that we've had a steady increase in reserve funds going back to 2012. Some of that early increase is due to reimbursements from FEMA from Hurricane Irene, which occurred in 2011. More recently, we've been experiencing a lot of vacancy savings in police due to the department being understaffed. We've also been receiving some FEMA payments for previous disasters as well that have increased that. As a percentage of budget, we, in the early years, were around 14 to 17%. That has increased to 20 to 30%. However, each year, as I mentioned, the Select Board does look at this and try to determine how much money can be put back into the budget to offset taxes in the next year to get us to the target of 15%. So you can see that from 2019 to 2025, we've steadily tried to increase, well, not tried to increase, we've added amounts to the budget that's appropriate to keep 15% in reserves. But each year, we've either had unexpected revenue or continued vacancy savings, which have led to end-of-the-year balance being closer to 30% than the target of 15, but it's not for lack of trying. So now we'll look at the town budget. I wanted to kind of go through some of those definitions. The reserve funds and unassigned restricted funds will become important as you look at the tax rate in the FY26 budget. So the tax rate presented here and all estimates that follow are based on an estimated FY26 grand list value. The final grand list value will be set prior to the Select Board finalizing the FY26 tax rate in July of 2025. So spending is actually down from FY25 by about $45,000. The general fund is up slightly by about $407. The Highway Fund is down by about $45,000. However, even with spending being down, the tax rate from FY25 to FY26 has an increase of 6.83%. And we will get into why that's the case in a couple of slides. So municipal tax rate in FY25 was 0.4969, and FY26, it's at 0.5308, which is a 0.0339 increase or 6.83% from year to year. Looking at what that does for property values, $100,000 worth of property in the current fiscal year is taxed at $497. There would be a $34 increase to that tax for a total of $531 in FY26. I've listed a few different values there so that you can look at one that might be closest to your property value to get a sense of where your tax would be. So for instance, $500,000 in property was 2485, and the current tax year increases by $170 to $2,655 in FY26. One thing to keep in mind as we look at the tax rate is that the municipal tax is only about 30% of your total tax bill. The way the education taxes work, they come through the town. So when every resident receives their tax bill, it includes money that's raised to go back towards the municipal budget, as well as money raised that the town then sends quarterly to the education tax. So when you look at that bill, just keep in mind that 30% of it is town and 70% is the school tax. Both of those budgets are being voted on here over the next month by March 4th. This is a chart that shows the town budget year by year from 2011 through 2026. You'll see a slight anomaly in '23, that's the year that we put items in the budget that were offset by reserves. We've since not done that. Anything that's offset by reserve, you don't put in the budget. We put it on a separate sheet to note that to try to keep the budget a little bit more consistent for comparison's sake, year to year. This is a chart that breaks everything down by department. Highway being fairly equipment-intensive, as well as using a lot of expensive materials, has the highest budget at 1.9 million, followed by administration and police, and then fire, then library. Then we've got planning and zoning, contracted social and health services, assessors, and recreation. So as I noted, spending is down, but the tax rate is up, and this is primarily due to a decrease in key revenue sources. Net interest on general checking had been budgeted at $100,000 in FY25, but we reduced that to $50,000 in FY26 due to a lower overall cash balance due to the flooding that we had significant expenses for, and lower interest rates, as those have been coming down over the last year or so. Unassigned fund usage decreased from $433,000 in fiscal year 25 to $78,000 in fiscal year 26. These two sources alone account for $404,000 in available revenue that was used to offset the tax rate in FY25 that is not available for FY26. So flood expenses, the combined total, so let's look at the combined total of unassigned and restricted funds as we started the fiscal year at the end of fiscal year 24. So June, July 1st, 2024, and we headed into this fiscal year, we had $1.5 million in unassigned and restricted funds. Then 10 days later, we got hit with flooding, and the total bill of that year-to-date right now is $1.9 million, and those are hard expenses for contractors and materials. That's not even counting staff time. But as you can see right there, if we were just reliant on unassigned and restricted funds to pay for the flooding, we would be in the red. So this year, we looked at things to see, is there any money that we could use from unassigned and restricted to put towards the FY26 budget? So we start with that $1.5 million combined unassigned and restricted at the top right. And then we first looked at expenses. So we had a total of $1.9 million in expenses from the 2024 flood. We have some unfinished repairs from the 2023 flood, and we included those because we've already received money from FEMA. We need to retain that money to pay for those unfinished repairs, that's about $375,000. We have a planned use of unassigned and restricted funds in the FY25 budget, $433,000. So that subtotal is about $2.7 million of either budgeted or unbudgeted uses of the unassigned and restricted funds. Then we looked at what money do we expect to receive in fiscal year 25 to help us get a projection of how much we'll have in unassigned and restricted funds at the end of fiscal year 25, so the end of this June. So we are still receiving reimbursements from three disasters prior to the FY20, July 24th flood. This includes the Halloween 2019 storm, which we've got some final payments on, the 2023 flooding, and the 2024 windstorm in January. We're expected to get about $600,000 in revenue in FY25 from those. We also have some projected savings in the highway budget for FY25. Some of this is due to projects that were budgeted in FY25 in the summer, but were not able to be accomplished due to the response from flooding, which consumed three to four months of time of the highway staff. We also have projected vacancy savings in the Police Department of about $56,000. Then we looked at other ways to pay for the flooding, and if we look at our Bridgen Culvert Reserve Fund, we had, we used the full balance of that, $473,000 to go towards response for the flooding and offset when we have to use unassigned funds. We also have the Special Product Reserve Fund, which is the ARPA money that's set aside in the reserve fund for uses that ARPA would be able to be used for. But the voters also put in a clause into that, Select Board could use that in emergency purposes to pay for expenses with the goal, with the stipulation that it be reimbursed once we get reimbursed from FEMA. So that found us about $2 million worth of revenue. So the total unassigned and restricted funds projected at the end of fiscal year 25 is $809,000. 15% of the FY26 budget would be $730,000, which leaves $78,000 above that 15%. They can be put towards the FY26 budget. As I mentioned, we'll be getting reimbursed from FEMA for the 24 flood. If it stays similar to the '23 flood, we should start to see payments in about this summer to early fall. The payments are initially reimbursed at 75%. There is some money, some additional money after that, that takes another year or so to be reimbursed. So looking at the money that we expect to receive within the next year, about $1.4 million will come back into the Highway Department, and about $51,000 will come back into the general fund. The first thing we need to do with those reserve funds is pay down or reimburse the Bridgen Culvert Reserve Fund so they can be reimbursed for future projects and reimburse the Special Project Reserve Fund so that too can be reimbursed for special projects going forward. So to summarize, we used $433,000 to offset what needs to be raised by taxes in the current fiscal year. In FY26, we only have $78,000 to offset what is to be raised by taxes in FY26. So that will get us to 15% of the FY26 budget on hand, which is $730,000. But that difference of just under $400,000 is the reason why we have lower spending, but an increased tax rate. Now we'll take a look at general town debt. As we mentioned earlier, we have really transitioned from taking loans and bonds for capital equipment to putting money away ahead of time into capital reserves and paying for that equipment in cash, thus avoiding larger interest payments. We do still have these four loans in the books from the 2005 fire truck. We have a $10,000 per year loan, which will be finished in 2026. The 2018 fire truck has a $49,000 loan, which final payment will be due in 2026. We have Jericho Road improvements that will be at $55,000 per year, and final payment is in 2032. And we had a stormwater project on Miller Street that we're paying $7,000 a year for, and the final payment is also in 2032. Now we'll look at some of the changes by department. First, I'll look at changes that affect multiple departments. So the salaries of town staff are budgeted to go up one step on the pay grid, and the pay grid is budgeted to increase by 3%. This is guidance from the compensation study that we did a couple of years ago to try to keep wages current with inflation and competitive with neighboring towns. Health insurance costs increased by 10%. The town pays 90% of the premiums, and the employees pay 10% of their premiums. We also saw about a 16% increase in property and casualty workers' compensation, assigned risk, and unemployment insurance for the town. We also restructured the capital plan and reduced plan contributions to some capital reserves through FY26 in an effort to get the FY26 budget as low as we possibly could. That does bump out some payments to future, future years with higher payments in future years. But there might be, as we get reimbursed from FEMA, there might be some more money available in those, in those budgets to help offset taxes that need to be raised to contribute back to capital projects there. In the administration, we are proposing one change to staffing. In the administration, we are proposing one change to staffing. We currently have an assistant to the town manager. We're proposing changing that to a deputy town manager. That increases from thirty hours per week to forty hours per week. The justification for this is there's been a large increase in the amount of administrative work over the last couple of years. And here's some examples, increase in FEMA reporting. We seem to have. We've got three active disasters that we're working on reporting right now. Management of installations in town parks primarily due from the ARPA funding. So each one of those, we need to manage those installations and purchasing process. Town center maintenance is ongoing and increase in the number of grant projects. With the emergency watershed protection program, we've got two properties involved right now with eight more potentially on the way. All that's money that has to run through the town and be managed by the town. We have the FEMA buyout and elevation program for private residences. Again, it's partially managed by the town. Managing increased requests for proposal for purchasing, managing community organizational, sorry, committee organizational needs as well. And there's much more, but this is sort of some of the highlights. The police department is budget is constructed to have four officers and a shared chief with Heinsberg. So we've essentially budgeted for. The expenses for half of a police chief. We also pushed out the purchase of a cruiser by one year to eliminate the need to contribute to police capital reserve in FY twenty six. And the cruisers haven't been driven as much as they would normally be if we were fully staffed. So we think we can bump that out a year and be okay with police cruisers. The library department budget has added a twelve hour per week position. This will help ensure that there's at least two staff members present at the library at all times for safety reasons. It provides better staffing to be able to run programs and assist patrons, also be able to better cover days off for employees. Library services in general have expanded and the use of community room has increased, which increases the need for staff. The fire department, we've increased the salary line to account for an increase in call volume. We've also added twenty five thousand dollars for a needs assessment. Which will help plan for the future of the department, looking at everything from staffing to equipment. So now we're going to transition to the two, a couple of other construct, so a couple of other Australian ballot items. This first one being the conservation reserve fund. This item is voted on each year by Australian ballot, and this funds the conservation reserve fund by increasing the tax rate in FY twenty six. So the question on the, of the article is, do we want to increase? It's, I think, one cent on the grand list for, or on the tax rate to fund the conservation reserve fund. At the current estimated grand list of eight million dollars, it would be about eighty thousand dollars that would go to the conservation reserve fund. If that passes, the tax rate would go from a six point eight three percent increase to eight point eight four percent, which would be two point oh one percent increase in the tax rate. The conservation reserve fund question would add ten dollars in taxes per year per hundred thousand dollars in property value. So this is a look at what the total tax bill would be if the budget passes and the conservation reserve fund passes. So on a hundred thousand dollar property value. The current tax rate, current tax amount is four hundred and ninety seven dollars. If the budget and conservation both pass, the increase would be forty four dollars, the five hundred and forty one dollars per hundred thousand dollars of value in FY twenty six. And again, I've broken down a few other things, hopefully for some easy reference. Now we'll pivot to social services allocations and go into a little bit in depth as to why some of these are on the ballot and why some of these are included in the budget. So prior to FY twenty five, all charitable appropriation requests were submitted to the select board and included in the budget for approval by the voters. However, last year we were informed by case law and statute and attorneys for the town advised that each social service appropriation be voted on separately by the voters by Australian ballot. So we looked at the definition of social services, and that is defined as such programs include but are not limited to transportation, nutrition, childcare, medical care. And other rehabilitation services for persons with low incomes, senior citizens, children, disabled persons, persons with a substance use disorder. And persons requiring employment to eliminate their need for public assistance. So requests that don't fit into that statutory guideline could then be included in the budget if they were categorized as something else such as recreation or police. Items that the select board last year categorized as recreation were Lake Derrico Association, the community band, the farmer's market, Camel's Home Little League Fields. And Halloween on the Green. So those are included in the budget under the Recreation Department. Included under the Police Department is the Chitney Unit for Special Investigation, which assists with special, mostly I think sex crimes. So if we have one of those in Richmond, it goes to that special unit investigation. We included that in the regular police department budget. Requests that were contracted social services. So these are things that we have a contract for contractual obligation to pay include the Special Services Transportation Agency. The Community Outreach Program provided by the Howard Center and the Williston Community Justice Center. Items that are donation by health services with a direct benefit to the town include Richmond Rescue and UVM Home Health and Hospice. And two that were considered to be administrative for the Greater Burlington Industrial Corporation, which is helpful in some grant funding. And M N C T V, which provides an amazing service of recording and posting most all of our public needs. So this year on the ballot, there are nine allocations for social services on the Australian ballot. These are not included in the budget. If they all pass, it will add nineteen thousand three hundred and seventy five dollars to the budget. This should be an increase of two dollars and forty one cents per hundred thousand dollars of property value. Since some of these are about a thousand dollars each, I wanted to break down what a thousand dollar increase would be to the budget. So if there's a thousand dollars voted for a social service, that adds about twelve cents. Per hundred thousand dollars in property value. And then finally, if the budget passes as presented, the conservation fund passes and all social services pass. It would be represent a nine point three two percent tax increase over FY twenty five. And now we'll have the very familiar chart which shows a hundred thousand dollars in property value currently has a four hundred and ninety seven dollar tax bill. If all three things pass, the budget, social services and conservation fund will increase by forty six dollars. The total bill of five hundred and forty three dollars. Again, I've broken down a few different values. So you can get a look at the tax amount for different values of property. And that is the end of the presentation and happy to answer some questions and go back to any slide we need to.
I'm, I'm going to start with, I think, a few clarifications on slides. So start with slide six. If we could. Just for clarity, this says one FTE and I think it's probably say point five FT.
Okay.
That's really just because we keep saying that and that's what our budget is. I think it would be clear.
Yep.
I can change it.
On that?
Yes.
So what is our arrangement? You know, we sort of flipped it and some of the stuff I've read, you know, as far as the chief, some of the things I've read is that Heinsberg was not. Too happy with us?
Can I suggest, ask us if we hold that briefly? Because these are really mechanical and then come back to sort of content. Slide ten. This has come up throughout my time on the select board. Who pays for this? And I think we could add something that's a little more clear. Not only are, is the budget separate, but the. Costs of the water sewer, water resources department are borne by customer user fees, including septicage and the town fire protection fee.
And we'll say town fire protection fee. Basically, we're paying for the water and hydrants that would be you, and well, not just hydrants, but if my house catches on fire. I don't live in the district, but the water, I'm paying for that water.
So the infrastructure within the water district that is used for fire protection is, is built to the town as a whole to spread the cost. So that four hundred users aren't paying for the water infrastructure for fire protection for the forty one hundred residents.
Which was the case for a very many years that.
It was the construction of the new tank that caused a few eyebrows to be raised and that to be allocated more equitably.
So I'll point out, this got a lot of conversation at the Water Sewer Commission. At one point when we were contemplating expansion of a line into the gateway, we did an incomes and study of the users and at that point. The income of the customers of the water sewer system were noticeably lower than the income of the town as a whole. So it became pretty clear, you're asking people with lower income to subsidize a fire protection system for the rest of the town, which is a lot more people, most of whom. On average have higher income. And then for an example, slide fifty two.
Actually, before you go there, actually Josh, while you go there, Bart, I just wanted to add. I've had some pretty intense discussions with people who. Remind me that the town has to vote the bond for the water sewer district and there's some confusion. There's a perception that then the taxpayers have to pay that back. This is just a reminder that the Water Sewer Commission has no bonding authority. So that falls on the town. So the town does the bonding, but the water sewer users pay back that bond. That burden has never been. And never will be shifted to the taxpayers. That's a, a popular misconception that. Keeps surfacing. Connie, I see you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Just to be a little more specific on the fire protection. What that is broken down to is forty percent. Of the tank loan, it's a revolving loan that we have through the bond bank in Vermont. Then there was another forty eight percent of the gap loan, which was a loan we took through a bank to make up the difference of what we needed. That's paid off at this point. And then the last part is five percent of the entire water budget.
Thank you, Connie.
Bart, go ahead.
So for, there are several examples of this slide, Josh, and I think we might just say the current tax rate bill is that per year, per quarter to clarify per year.
So maybe annual tax bill.
If you make that note.
And it's a little thing, but just, you know, for clarity.
For sure.
That was it for the sort of structured things. And then there was a question about police.
Fran, go ahead.
Well, my question is, where are we really at with the police chief and with the town Heinsberg? Is, are they really going to split it with us now like we were splitting it with them? And has this? This is more not necessarily a budget question, but has this new arrangement created some acrimony between us and Heinsberg? I know that two of our highway people flipped over to Heinsberg and certainly I was, when I heard that, it's not really good. So we're sort of doing the same thing to them. And, you know, we had a pretty good arrangement with them relative to the police and I'm hoping that. You know, we can still have that arrangement. So how is that going to work now?
I can only describe a conversation or communications I've had with Merrily, their select board chair. Who has expressed an ongoing interest in a partnership between the towns. And I've said this. Maybe awkwardly in the meetings here. Traditionally, people talked about healthcare as a three-legged stool, stool, cost, quality and access, and they're all related, you know, that the. You can pay a lot more to improve access, but you care about all three, cost, quality and access. And it's my view that we could look at shared police services the same way, that there is an opportunity to improve our cost, quality and access by sharing. And Merrily agrees in principle to that in the conversations that I've had with her. Where that puts us today in terms of a specific, you know, person, specific circumstances, perhaps more obscure.
I mean, I heard that Heinsberg put, Cambridge suspended him. I'm not, you know, I'm hearing that on the grapevine. So is that what really happened? And that would say to me that there's. Some question as to whether we can have a good arrangement with them.
So he actually resigned earlier than he had anticipated Heinsberg. He anticipated working there and then starting here on February eighteenth, and I think he was anticipating working. For those couple of weeks in between, but he ended up for reasons that are his resigning earlier than that. So right now we have a little bit of a gap between when he resigned there and when he's going to start here on February eighteenth.
So they have, he has nothing to do with Heinsberg right now.
With either department at this point, he's sort of, it's had a bit of a two-week break before he starts up with Richmond.
Josh, just to be clear, he's, his scheduled start date is?
February eighteenth.
And how did this come about? Did he initiate it or did the select board? Initiate having them switch over to VR and point?
Yeah, he had expressed a desire that he wanted to be employed by the town in which he lived. He's lived here in Richmond for a number of years and. Been an officer in Heinsberg and it seemed to be important and that he wanted to be employed by Richmond and still try to continue the contract with Heinsberg. So we worked with them on that process.
Well, I hope we can work it out. Because it seemed like a good arrangement before. And what, how many officers do we have right now?
We currently have one officer.
And a canine dog.
And a canine dog, yes.
Right, I have, I've met both of them.
Yes.
Two feet and four paws.
There's no one, two, three, four.
Sorry, we have this ongoing joke. Whenever we enumerate our officers, we always have to throw in the dog. Bart was asking which ones to have, and I said one and a half. I said neither of them. They're both three quarters.
No, I actually, what I meant was, is a cog, does a dog count for half? It's probably less than half. So it's a fraction of.
But we are struggling with staffing. We're, we're always budgeting for more than we actually receive and that's.
I mean, that's, that's obviously everywhere.
Yeah.
And I see, you know, the police, state police academy graduated a dozen or so recently, but that really isn't even enough for them.
It's not.
And they tend to. Take officers from other departments in, into the state police. And, you know, when I was on the select board. When we had three or four officers and I never begrudge them, but they would go to a department where there was more opportunity for them, you know, the types of crimes. Though some of those crimes are here now, you know, the investigative authorities were there. So it's. It's a continuing problem that we're always going to have.
Yeah, you want to build your resume out and you can't go to a, you can't apply to be a sergeant in some bigger city if you say, yeah, pretty much we. Stop speeders and dealt with cattle. So yeah, I mean, you understand, but. Right now, the town of, the city of Burlington has just removed their police cap and. I didn't see a lot of officers waiting in their lobby to sign up, you know, everybody's hurting.
Yeah, it's a problem that is career wide regardless of department, but Richmond being a small department with limited future job growth feels it more. Than larger municipal police departments. It's.
Bart? I'd just say, you know, more broadly in response to Fran's question, I think it's a good question. Where are we? But also, where will we be? I anticipate this will be a continued conversation in the select board. For probably the foreseeable future about where are we with? Chief services, where are we with police officers, where are we sharing with Heinsberg? They're kind of three related. Topics, if that makes sense.
I will share that I'm very pleased with the arrangement that we've had with Heinsberg and I hope that continues. And I don't, I don't see any reason why I wouldn't.
Any questions?
Lisa.
Yeah, a couple, Josh, I don't remember what page or slide number your employee wage and schedule list was. It's one of the first few before this one anyway, but. Just one question, I would think would probably come up as we have a part-time employee. How, how is their time, how are they scheduled? How is their time managed? And, you know, do you have any limits on that?
Are we looking specifically at admin?
Yes.
So currently the assistant to town manager is budgeted at thirty hours per week. He's in most mornings, but does work a bit of a flexible schedule as he makes himself available for night meetings when necessary. And even sometimes on weekends he'll pop in for an hour to help a different group in the town center or something that needs to be done here.
Okay, so it's kind of an ad hoc thing.
Yeah, I mean, primarily it's, I mean, a lot of it's like eight to one, eight to noon, but given that it's thirty hours and his job duties sort of. Are flexible and he's actually very flexible, which is helpful as well. It's, sometimes it's more than thirty hours per week, especially if we get. Really busy with FEMA, there's some certain deadlines we have to hit that he'll have to spend a little extra time working his Excel magic to report back to FEMA.
Is it worth clarifying, and I think generally people know, but is it worth clarifying in this slide that the. Town manager and select board do not supervise the town clerk?
Oh, okay.
Connie, go ahead.
I just wanted to point out that the. One part-time assistant that's there is the assistant to the town clerk.
Oh, sorry, that, you're right.
Right, the full-time position that Josh was just talking about is currently thirty hours. And we'll be going to forty hours in the fiscal year twenty six budget. But the part-time position to the clerk is only twelve hours a week.
Yeah, and, and her schedule is primarily Monday through Friday, eight to noon right now. She will also work extra time if the clerk has um days that they need off. Um, yeah, she's also a local resident, has been very flexible to help cover different timeframes.
No, the part-time assistant clerk is only Monday through Wednesday.
What did I say? Was that, I thought it.
You said Monday through Friday.
That, that's your scheduled timeframe for, for the twelve hours, but then.
And I believe, just as we don't have authority over the town clerk, I don't believe we have a third. Authority over the assistant town clerk either, because the clerk appoints that person.
Correct, yeah, I'll make some notes on that.
Thank you, Connie. Fran?
Oh, yeah, relative uh to the town clerk, um. I assume that. Linda, uh. When she retires will be available to help whoever the new town clerk is.
Right, we discussed that.
And then you have uh a salary line in there for the new town clerk and. I'm wondering if you consider in that salary line, when I was on the select board and we were creating probably the first. Pay scale that we, the town ever had. Um, education. Played a part in the salary of the town clerk. So we get a new town clerk who has no education. In being a town clerk. Or is that considered in the starting salary? Is that, is the starting salary considered a base? Or um, or, you know, how are we gonna encourage? Relative to, I didn't check. Compared to what Linda is getting currently, but I'm hoping that what you put in there is lower than what Linda's getting. And that, that it, it kind of encourages the town clerk. Whoever it is to get. Will undergo the courses that is on their list of education opportunity.
Sure, so we did budget, uh, with a pay grade that's got ten different grades on it. And Linda's at the further end of her grade because of her years of service. So for the advertising for the budget, we put this back at a step one, which would be the first step on that. Um, it's an interesting point about educational bonuses. We did include that when we did the study twenty twenty two for. I think there's a bonus for becoming a CDL driver, highway, water, wastewater, have some, some certification bonuses built in. We did not build that into the town clerk position, so right now you basically go up a step that you're here. But it's something we could contemplate in future budgets to see if we want to add that in. The other thing that Linda has is a two percent stipend for taking on certain financial duties, which help us keep separation of powers. And we've included that in the estimate for the town clerk as well. For the new clerk, but again, at a, at a lower pay rate than than what we're currently at, for sure.
Lisa?
I got four, so just grab them off. I guess I'd suggest we make sure that too, well, I guess, uh, make sure we reference the recent audit. We were given, uh, just last week.
Okay.
Or earlier this week, uh, the compliments are results. I mean, if it was uncompromising, I suppose we have to talk about it. There's definitely talk about it. Shouldn't take long, but. That's where professionals who do that for a living found that we're doing a really good job. It's nice to hear.
Yeah, they had no negative per se.
Right, they get paid no matter what and. Yeah, they have to pay well.
And it's their job to be hard on us.
And yeah, they didn't have issues with our controls, which in previous years they've commented on.
Yeah, I mean, they had, they had two things and there, there were basically suggestions. There was nothing that they said. Oh my God, you need to change this immediately. Um, and they complimented Connie for her good work for the last year and years prior as well.
Uh, on page thirty six, the pie chart, I had trouble seeing it, seeing some of the legends in the dark, like the blue areas. Which is black font, maybe it's just me. Yes, they maybe use, either use white font. Or in the pie chart or outside something like that. I don't know if you're great in that. Can I read my notes? Uh, I guess on page thirty eight, you did a good job, Josh, of explaining. You know, the calamities we've had to face and here we are, we're still standing. So. That's, that's great. I think if we emphasize even further, there's parts of the current tax increase that are putting money towards potential weather. Problems next year. If they don't happen, wow, we have money left over. If they do happen, we're ready. So either way, we're. Doing the best we can to predict the future. So I don't know how much you've really said about that. Do you want to say more about that?
I'm not sure what you mean by money for future weather issue.
Well, we have, we've, we've set a line up from, uh, is it from reserve funds into next year's budget? Or. You know, estimates based on current spending, based on what we've experienced.
Are we putting money aside for the next huge flood?
No, because we don't have. No, so.
We don't have.
We have the fifteen percent.
Maybe what we can talk about is that fifteen percent, a little bit more, I can emphasize that more.
We budgeted knowing that it's likely. If it doesn't happen, you know, we, we guess the, we just run.
Okay, I can emphasize that, that portion more in the presentation.
We're, we're walking a fine line between, you know. Trying to gather money that we can't when we feel we should.
I checked under my sufficiency. Go ahead, I found a lot. Actually, yes. Nice cute little blue one, my cat knocked it off.
It is a tight rope walk because the. Best practice dictates a fifteen percent reserve, uh, by statute, we can't bank. Money for a rainy day fund.
Right.
When we know it's gonna rain.
So we're basically, we're using other reserve accounts that have nothing to do with weather.
Right.
Right, a special projects fund, for example, and we have to pay that back first. So. Before we can bank money, which we couldn't do anyway. For a rainy day, a little rainy day, we have to pay ourselves back to refund those reserves.
Right.
So right now, when I look at Bart and say, we, we have no money to put aside, we literally have negative money to put aside.
And I'm just gonna crack the door into this world, but we don't know if we can rely on FEMA funding going forward and.
Yeah.
Looking at the data, it's highly likely that we'll have more storms and more intense storms. That's where we are.
Okay.
Bart? I would only add something, you know, when you talk about preparing, well, we haven't put money aside in a literally rainy day fund. We have, um. Pete and the highway department have upgraded. Um, roads and culverts around the town over time and, and an effort to get ahead of this. Instead of always being undersized in terms of culvert and rip ramp on the. Shoulders of the back roads. So those are. I, you know, when I just drive around, they look really different than they looked twenty years ago in terms of both culverts and the shoulder armoring.
We're gonna get the sweet spot for culverts until. God or Mother Nature takes that as a challenge and goes even larger.
That is a good point, as our infrastructure has been literally wiped away, it has been rebuilt better. And standing up, a lot of what's been replaced has survived subsequent flooding.
Uh, page fifty eight, the social services allocation, is the CGC still in existence? I don't know.
Yes.
But they're consolidating, the state wants to consolidate to one CJC per county.
Right.
Yeah.
And we have six.
Six, four.
Four, and, and so somebody. The other, one of them, probably the Burlington one will be chosen as the remaining one. And then we'll have to take on the responsibilities of these other three.
Yeah, right now the funding for that. It's challenging because they don't have an answer. They're trying to figure that out in the current legislative session. So we, we've written a letter to the legislators to ask, can they keep it status quo for FY twenty six? Um, and we'll see what happens. My understanding is that even if they fund just one, they might then look at taking that grant money and sort of funding. Essentially outlets of it, right? So that like right now, there's four grants that come to Chittany County, one for Burlington. I think it's South Burlington, Essex and Williston, we're part of the Williston one. But even that funding doesn't cover the full amount, and for years, Williston has been making that funding up and in kind, so office space. As well as an actual monetary contribution from their reserve fund or from their taxes. I think it was last year they came to us in Heinsberg and said, you, you guys are using these services. Here's what we think is a fair amount to contribute. So we did that last year. We've kept the same amount in the budget for this year, knowing that we're not really sure what the future is gonna bring and even what FY twenty six is gonna bring. But at least we have some money there to get worth that. So.
Kind of gone down the middle.
Yeah, and one model could be that we've tried to make the argument that Chittany County is unique and might need two grants because. You've got the more urban center of Burlington and then the surrounding more densely populated towns um around Burlington, so. If any county deserves two grants, it might be that. And then that could again could work where. Burlington gets their grant from the state, and then there's one grant that might go, let's say, to Essex, and then they would. Have offices essentially in Williston and in South Burlington. So that's one potential model. Um, that's been a proposal to the legislature and the legislature is going to be working on that. Um, this go around, I think they're looking to have some things finalized by April. But we'll see and, but in one form or another. There will still be the community justice center for Arthur we need to use, and this is money that we've allocated to go towards whatever budget shortfalls they have.
I don't know how many people might ask about that. It's good to hear.
Well, yeah, it's a good question, and it's relatively new information and the change is, is sort of. Undetermined at this point.
I, I think people are gonna continue to trip up by the fact that they hear that we're moving all. Money that goes to another organization to the Australian ballot, as this slide says. Uh, well, as it. These are not donations.
No, this is included in the budget, right.
Yeah, this is included the budget. It doesn't explicitly say on here, this is not on the Australian ballot. And so I think consequently, people go, well, the money is going to somebody else, therefore we're gonna vote on it.
Okay.
Well, when they get their ballot, these are not gonna be there.
Yeah, okay. And that's because we look at that as like, we get a direct service from that, like Richmond rescue, like we, you know.
It's a line item, basically.
It's a line item and we're, we're directly using that service. As a town.
Uh, that's all I got.
There's still donuts left, by the way, if anybody uh needs a donut.
I've been mostly.
Fran?
Well, I want to make sure Lisa's done with it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Never invite me to a meeting without you asking questions. Um, it's obvious based on how many people are here. That we need to do a better job of getting people out. We don't have a town report. So how many people are really going online and looking at the budget? The school uh district sent out uh postcards last week, talking about their. The budget hearings. Um, I think we need to do that. We've got one more hearing coming up. Yes, uh, twenty fifth or twenty eighth, exactly. By then I assume we'll have our town report. But. Look at, you know. For the people that, you know, I'm still a paper person, I can look at it online, but I still like. The, the paper and, and getting. Seeing the town report, um, gets more questions. So I, I think it would be good if you sent out a flyer that talks about. That next hearing and maybe a little of the points that you have made today about the taxes. Because. We're not having a town meeting where. The two hundred people that do come. Um, will be able to ask their questions and understand. So that would just be a suggestion that you send something out fairly soon. Talks about the next. Next public hearing and maybe some points about what, you know, the increase in, in the budget could. Makes it much easier, you know, your presentation has made it much easier to understand where we are. That's first thing. And the second thing was, I'd like to see. Where are we on the fire truck discussion?
So.
Now, I'm not expressing an opinion one way or the other, I just.
Yeah, no, let me get, I guess, some notes I'll refer to for the fire truck, um. So we do currently have on order a rescue truck that will carry, I think it's. Five hundred gallons of water. Um, and that rescue truck is going to replace the rescue truck that we currently have now that doesn't carry any water. Um, this rescue truck was in the capital plan in fiscal year twenty two. Included for purchase in fiscal year twenty five. In FY twenty three, twenty four and twenty five capital plans, the truck was also included in those plans for purchase in twenty seven, as we had to pump it out a little bit. Um, the select board approved the purchase of this truck at their September fifth, twenty twenty three meeting. Um, we have paid a hundred and twenty one thousand, three hundred dollars for the chassis. And would have to take the delivery of the chassis if we stopped the contract, and there would be other penalties as well if we had stopped the contract for that truck. The total purchase price of the truck is five hundred eighty nine thousand and forty six dollars, so. Essentially, we've, we've made some down payments on the truck, we've bought the truck, and we would be out probably over a hundred thousand dollars if we stopped that. What we are doing is we took um advantage of a, of a resident's father who's got thirty plus years in fire department business. He's started to conduct a survey of the department. He's met with the department, he's looked at what we have for. Equipment and staffing in the department. I expect that we'll have a study probably this week, and he's doing that pro bono. So he's gonna look at, see like what should our next purchases be, what issues we need to address in the department right now. Um, and the board will take that, we'll have that discussion about what. You know, what does that mean for staffing? What does that mean for equipment purchases going forward? And then there's twenty five thousand dollars in the budget. That we can, if we need a paid study beyond what the resident's father is able to provide. We can put some of that money towards that to make sure that we're making good decisions going forward.
We used to have to bond. Fire trucks.
And we decided to use our capital plan, so we weren't bonding anymore.
Um, yes, but it does not give, um. The residents. Much of us say in a very. Expensive purchase.
We're hoping that by, by avoiding bonding, it's becoming a less expensive purchase.
Well, I know.
Oh, it is.
The interest wise, but it doesn't give the town, you know, still the. Initial cost of that piece, any piece of equipment. Fire trucks being our most, and I'm, I'm not. Expressing an opinion or I guess just, um. It appeared to me from what I read and heard about residents' concerns, that they were concerned about the purchase of such a big. Um, piece of equipment and, and in effect. Have. You're the only ones that have a say.
I hear what you're saying, Fran, but I also have to, to point out that this was addressed in prior town meeting. Uh, budgets, so anybody from the floor could have said, why are we spending this much money? I object to that. Uh, there was discussion about it, so ultimately, I hear your point, but the decision was. Given to the voters, it was in an overall budget, it wasn't a standalone.
Not, not this particular fire truck that we're talking about now, couldn't have been because. I don't know, it, it used to be very specific, we want to buy. A fire truck. At five hundred thousand dollars and, and I don't think that it ever not passed.
Right. But it has generated discussion.
And I, and by not having a specific question. I mean, you did. Hear from some concerned citizens as well.
I also want to point out that the figures that were going around in public were not accurate. There were quotes of eight hundred thousand and more.
Well, so it, it helps when you have those questions, that somehow you, we use the front porch forum. Or another means to sort of explain. Um, away those concerns.
Bart?
Um, I think Fran raised a good point because it's not about the finance. It's not the financial perspective it is, and I use the term without. Negative connotation, the political question of the voters weighing in. So while we talk about this as select board meetings and it comes up, it's in the capital plan. I'm gonna say, given the number of people who. Are sometimes fuzzy about the school tax versus the town tax, that there are a significant percentage of citizens and voters who don't dive into that level of detail in the town budget. Um. So my wheels were just turning here, it might be. Worth contemplating this as like either advisory or breakout budget items, you know. We're kind of in uncharted territory, moving from town meeting to Australian ballot. So maybe that's something for us to talk about, hey, we talked about a town meeting and now here afterwards.
Exactly, yeah, the town meeting, the question is, do we want to split our budget?
Right, well, and then, and if so, to this point. It is possible you could say, like, we want, whether it's a vote on that. Specific spending item or an advisory motion on like, you know, should we buy this or not? Um, and I think that is sort of the challenge of transparency. Um, and I think that is sort of the challenge of transparency in our new world order. Um, we can't talk about it during town meetings. So how do you get input? It's clear that while we get more people participating, select board meetings by virtual participation. And bringing donuts.
And pies.
And pies. It's still a small number of voters and residents in any given meeting and people typically show up for a specific thing. And then one final point about the fire truck is the wheels started turning, so to speak, a while ago on this fire truck. And so the and it was talked about here. We discussed it and approved the purchase order. What year was that?
A couple of years ago.
A while ago. Um, but it is, you know, to um the point that was made, it wasn't a bond vote. It wasn't discussed at town meeting. And so for most voters, it's just kind of buried in the select board business. Yeah, but again, you know, maybe to call out those. Sentinel. Items like that. The other thing that I think we might talk about here today is, and I'm. I don't know if it was going to come up later is where where are we on the town center building with plans and budgeting? It's not. For those of you who have not been in here, there literally was a weak be uh leak between the post office. Annex and the main building that led to some ceiling tiles falling in and it's illustrative of. Some of the challenges of the current state of the building. But maybe we just talk about um. I think for people who are aware of our, that was a bond vote that failed. Where are we going next? What is our current state? Is that worth mentioning how we're briefly here today?
Sure, um, I don't have a ton of information from the committee, but um. And Earl County has maybe something on the fire truck, but um. Yeah, so the bond vote failed and then we sort of reform formulated the committee. I think there's only one member that that stayed on. The dad committee spent the last now almost year looking at, you know, needs of the of the building. I think they're trying to sort of address some of the more low hanging fruit, like what can we do kind of quickly that's not a lot of money. But I know they're also contemplating larger expenses. They were looking at the windows, for instance, the last couple of weeks to see. What larger expenses do we need to do here in the town center? Um, I don't have a comprehensive report from them at this point.
Could I just add that I think those would require bond votes because our balance is what, under three hundred thousand dollars? On the town center reserve.
Well, we have a solution for that. We've talked about the fire department via calendar. That's right. We're going to do a photo calendar members of the fire department.
Solve all of our budget issues.
Connie, go ahead.
Yeah, in regard to the um the capital plan. It's like I so much wish that more people from the public attended our budget meetings because it's it's awesome when somebody like Fran is here. Asking questions. It helps us get out of the box a little bit. Uh, because we're just so tightly in there. It's like. We miss some of the important stuff. The capital plan is. Brought up different times throughout the budget. It is displayed through do it. Different times as we discuss the budget over the course of three months. It is in draft format. Right now I am trying to wrap it up and we should have it on the next select board meeting. At which point you guys will decide, yep, this looks good. Let's do a fifteen day warning. Everybody has a chance to look at it and can show up at that next meeting and. Voice their concerns or voice their concerns when we come to you guys with the draft. But that happens every single year and if the public shows up at these meetings, they definitely have a say.
It's also, of course, Front Porch Forum where. We can at least post. Links to this video, links to the budget. And Josh and I, and I guess the whole select board had briefly talked about feeding a lot of this into chat G P T and saying generate a fact. Um, we've had good luck with doing that with other documents. And so there's a number of ways to present present this. Right now, the drawback is unless you do this habitually. These numbers just turn into a blur.
Something is in the capital plan doesn't mean it has to end up in the budget. Is that correct?
Yeah, we can put money aside and then say we're not going to buy that after.
So right now, when you see this next version come out. I mean, there's a vacant spot where we're talking about maybe not replacing engine number one. That's going to be dependent on. What the survey and if we do a needs assessment says. So that right now is pulled out of. The capital plan and was not considered as part of the reserves that we've raised this year. What that means is if we decide it does need to be replaced. Then we're going to have to do a little catch up. So although the capital plan covers five years. We project now way further than that because we're trying to avoid those highs and lows that we've talked about so much and. Yeah, we the fire department is my biggest challenge when we look at the capital plan because those are really, really big. Purchases, but we did a fifteen year look back and found that we paid a million dollars in interest on. Loans and bonds that we had, so. If we can continue to do this, it's a good way to do it. And Josh, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we get to a point where we said we really couldn't put it as an article? On the ballot because it's not being paid. With a bond, it's being paid through the reserve, which is part of the budget they're voting on. And in the town report, it does. Say what the next fiscal year's capital expenditures will be.
Thank you, Connie.
I have one more.
Go ahead.
Sorry. I think I sent you something about the town of Waterbury and maybe Duckberry trying. Since we've been pretty much eliminated uh town meeting, you know, you have a couple of things that happen. At a town meeting, but I can't imagine many voters showing up um that too would see. They were trying something during the budget process of getting community members out so that they could. You'd have, they had their budget almost. Finished, but we're looking for me to bring community members in to really pay attention to the budget and. Is there any thought for next year about trying to get people?
We've actually talked about that quite a bit. At the V L C T Town Fair meeting last fall in um. Killington, there is a whole discussion um with people from four, three or four towns. That have tried various approaches, including one that actually calls the citizen input session pie day. And they bring in. Tons of pies. It's like it's something like the senior center. Anybody other would just bring in tons of pies and people come in. And stand up and make requests and defend the requests and they discuss them. But you know, obviously nothing is final because I, you know, it's not a representative sample. We have. Put out things in Front Porch Forum and said in town and in select board meetings that we would really like to have people come to our meetings that we would. We would do cartwheel, people to show we'll have pie. I mean, I brought pie. And we are not having the same luck getting people to come out.
We should do that on March fourteenth.
Oh, they 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 do it before they finalize the budget.
Well, we know we were asking since October.
Well, I know to your regular meetings, but if you really make more. It appears they're they're taking one meeting and making an effort with pie day or whatever to get. People out. This is your last chance. To input.
I'm thinking about it here as opposed to doing that. We have had, what was it, seven special meetings?
Yeah, and I think I've thought about this a little bit. I think this year we had a few things kind of working against us. We didn't really know until November that we were going to be on Australian ballot. We had a pretty challenging budget as far as trying to like work on it. So it took a lot of meetings. But what I think we can discuss maybe at the first meeting in October next year about the budget is setting a date early. And say, okay, January tenth, we're going to do this day. And then we sort of work everything back from that. And then wherever we are in January tenth of the budget, that's the goal of being finalized. We invite everybody. We get sort of this is your last chance. And then we have another meeting to finalize from the select board that goes to the voters. But I think if we set the date early and work back from it, it's doable.
I think it's worth a try.
Yeah, what does it cost us? Just pie.
And we did have special meetings, but maybe frame this as a public hearing and even do it like on a different day. Like, you know, here's our draft proposed budget for discussion. And it's kind of implicit, but I guess Fran's point is really it's not as explicit as it might have been.
I mean, I've been in your shoes, so I know how many people would come to. You know, budget preparation meetings, so I understand that, but. You know, once people have gone through this year and realized. You know, there are people after the meeting, the town meeting where we did away with town meeting. Had we weren't even aware that that meeting was happening. So somehow we're still not. Reaching a lot of people and these are educated people. It kind of surprised me. Um, they had no clue. So somehow we got a.
Fran, you know, let me interrupt it. It sounds. To me like there's a lot of people that either trust what we're doing. Because the ways of being able to access information are very even. Move a couple of fingers, you know, front porch form, the town website, phone, you know, uh. Newspapers, there's all kinds of. For people to inform themselves and still not using them, so.
A flyer in the mail is still. A way where you can reach theoretically, reach everything.
True, it's different than any other way.
There are people that are. They're computer literate, but. Maybe you look at the front porch forum now and then, but you know, it's. They've sort of backing off from that kind of stuff.
Can I also ask, have you ever considered for these meetings um childcare? So that you get a a group of parents that may want to come and be more involved, but you know, have those kind of struggles or. Instead of pies, which I love, right? Um, having a dinner, right? It'd be a little bit more celebratory. Um, you know, catering with um. Catering with um meaning kitchen or something like that. There's some ideas. I'm out of the little kid years. For myself, but I am still close enough to remember. That you can't, you can't stuff anything else in.
That's what we try to do for um our annual meeting is we pair it with a dinner and we have childcare. For our annual meeting and we have more people. Each year we've had more people come since we've done that.
And who are you?
Suzanne Parra out of Gendocare's camp.
And just for the notes, you are.
Connell, hi, I'm new to Richmond. Um, I actually work with Virginia. On the planning committee. Um, I just started there about a month ago. Um, I do have a few questions. Um. I wanted to know, I wanted to understand the um. The the elements, I I'm not going to say this correctly, but the elements of the Australian ballot that we're bo- voting on that are like. The conservation fund and the other funds that fall under that category. I imagine that in the Australian ballot. There are going to be separate line items and you can say yay or nay to each of those three that I think there were.
I think Josh will pull it up.
Yeah, there's a sample ballot.
This picture will be worth a thousand words. And it has more than a thousand words.
So this is a sample ballot. So you've got um, the officials will be elected moderator, select board trustee. And below that, we've got the separate articles. So this is the budget article right here. Um, then we've got the conservation article, yes or no? And then there's a separate article for each of the appropriations. So you have lot family network, age well. Center for Independent Living and so on down to article seventeen and that's the can eat people on independently. So hopefully that's fairly straightforward.
Yeah, that's.
Without seeing it, I understand it's. The mystery.
Yeah, and these are going to be mailed for all residents?
Um, no, so we're not mailing out ballots. They are available for early voting in the town clerk's office. Um, I think maybe as early as this week. I don't think Linda's here to tell the exact date. Uh, but you can vote early and then of course in person voting on March fourth up at the middle from seven A M to seven P M.
Bart, so we aren't sure. It's tough to answer this because this is an example of the town clerk's world. Do we know when the town report is expected to be available in printed version?
I don't know when she's expecting to receive that. That that is, though, I mean, in the meantime, and for a while going forward. We do have it online here. Uh, so we've got an annual town meeting. This is under a um. Let me. Try to navigate here from the front. So it gets under a news post here. We've got. Well, if you go to. I'll try to make it more visible because it. So annual meeting under select board. Gives you this landing page where we've got the official warning. The orders to elections. Oh, wait, this is results. Sorry.
The town report is there.
Annual time at twenty five. Yeah, so this is the page I was just on. So this is a link from the select board page. We will make it a little more prominent. But we've got the town report, which is.
There you go.
Right here, town report. So this is at least a PDF version of the town report and it has everything you would have in there, including the budget and all all the different reports. Um, that also has a sample ballot. Towards the back. And a um. The warning as well, so.
And can I just be reminded of um. The number of the percentage increase if. None of the articles are approved. And the percentage increase if all of them are approved.
Yep.
And do we break it down also by chance by, you know, one or two or three being approved? Okay.
So that's what Josh had about for reference point. We like, we didn't. Or he didn't go say this one represents this, but there's a guidance about how a thousand dollars represents. How much in a tax increase.
Right, okay.
Based on grand list values.
So this is, so the the tax rate goes up by six point eight three percent. If just the budget's approved.
Okay.
All right, and then if we get to.
All of them.
Yeah, where's the conservation reserve fund? So if the conservation reserve fund passes. That goes from six point eight three to eight point eight four percent. And conservation reserve fund is really clean. If it passes, it's ten dollars in additional taxes per hundred thousand dollars of property value. So that's fairly easy to wrap your head around. The the one that's a little more challenging is. The social services because there's there's nine of them. And they vary from like a thousand dollars to like, I think, six thousand dollars or maybe even more. So what I tried to do was say, okay, every thousand dollars is added into the budget, twelve cents per hundred thousand dollars in value. If all of these were to pass, it would be nineteen thousand dollars total or two dollars and forty one cents per hundred thousand. Um, and that's where then the other answer to, I think directly to your question is if all three pass the budget, conservation reserve fund and every social service. That rep would represent nine forty three two percent tax relief from twenty five to twenty six.
Okay. And can I just ask for. For these funds, um. If they are not passed, right hypothetically, does that mean those services continue? Or like, how does that, what is that impacted? They don't pass in your.
Yeah, so most of these organizations are asking for like a portion of their budget kind of based on how much support they do in Richmond.
Okay.
So they they wouldn't close because they don't get the service from Richmond. And I think we would still have access, like residents that need it would still have access to the services. Um, but this is a way to to make a donation through the taxes. There's also other ways that people, you know, one argument is bad. Well, I don't want to do it through taxes. I donate to the charities that I want to donate to individually. So um, but I don't think any one of them would would necessarily shut their doors because they don't get the.
Okay.
I think they can all.
Could you pull up that section of the ballot again, please? So you can see examples of the organizations.
And then there's also um.
Yeah, I was out the room when you introduced yourself.
Rebecca Connell. I'm new to Richmond.
Well, I'm glad you're here. Thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, I'm sorry. Didn't recognize you when we interviewed you.
So, you know. So, you know, this is Bart again, just saying, you know, you can take them one at a time. There's our community cares camp. Which is based in Richmond, serves a lot of Richmond kids. The Committee on Temporary Shelter is. I think Chittenden County.
Um, it's most, well, it's mostly Burlington.
Yes, so, I mean. It's, uh, directly focused on people who are unhoused, um.
Yes, is basically the better one is shelter.
Um, Turning Point Center, each one of these has their own identity, their own budget. Some of them have very large budgets. Some of them have modest budgets. It, each organization is sort of unique.
I've likely commented on Turning Point Center because pretty much all of their operations are in Burlington. So, you know, some of these could, I, I bet some will be very popular and some may just catch by.
And for more information, each one submits a request, so we could just click into, and this is on that town meeting page. If you click into family network. We've got their initial request, so it has a little bit more information. So it says seventeen families are Richmond residents. Um, this would support a budget of one point one million. Well, other programs have two million, um, so we talked about our contribution would be one percent. Oh no, so that's. It's five hundred dollars of early dollar budget is what they're asking for.
Okay.
For Richmond, so in their case, it's a little, it's more nominal. Um, I will note Suzanne's here, our community cares camp, I think is probably the one that relies the most on the contribution from the town.
Okay.
Cause they're, they're, they're based in town and specifically for Richmond, I think, Mitchell Huntington and Walton residents. Um, so they're, they're, they're probably, that's probably a larger portion of their budget, whereas others of these, as Bart points out. Are more countywide and get more funding from other sources.
But I think it would be useful to put in French words for him precisely what you did, that if you're sick, as, as, it's a common question, do these actually benefit Richmond?
Yeah.
And if we say, here's the URL and click on each of them and you'll see their application.
Yeah.
We didn't take, we didn't. Put in the budget anybody who did not send an application. We didn't have anybody who just called you.
No, they all have applications and even, we even have applications for ones that are put in directly to the budget. So for instance. Community Band submitted an application, um, but they've been included in the budget based on like.
They're recreational.
Yeah, recreational, but if you want more information about them, you can look here and find out that as well. So we've, we've linked everything on this site. So hopefully there's a lot of information for people that.
Do you play an instrument?
Yeah.
They're always looking for me.
And I'll just point out, David, that the form, at least when we created it, was based on the United Way of Chittenden County forms. So we tried to align requests to us and requests to them that would make it easier for people to apply. I frankly haven't looked again at the United Way form to see if it's still the same, but that was our intent to both collect information and structure it in a way that's easy. Cause many of these organizations would also ask United Way for money. So if you're going to ask them, you could recycle this with some slightly different information. Connie, go ahead.
They speak to age well.
Um, where do you want to go, Connie or Fran?
Well, Connie's not around.
Yeah, I'll go to Connie and then back to Fran. Connie, you're muted.
On the ballot, on the conservation question, does it? List and, you know, like the eighty thousand that we see in Josh's presentation, does it say that in the ballot question?
It does not. Let me get to where it is, but so that eighty thousand is an estimate based on the estimated grand list. Where did I put the ballot, um? Too many tabs. Okay, here we go. So the actual question. Is here. Shall the town of Richmond vote to approve funding the Conservation Reserve Fund by adding one cent to the municipal tax rate in the twenty sixth fiscal year? Um, and that one cent essentially ends up becoming. Um, ten dollars per hundred thousand dollars in property value. And it essentially ends up being one percent of the final grand list value. So it'll be roughly eighty thousand dollars, but probably a little bit more once we finalize the final grand list in July.
But we make. Cause eighty thousand is a big number to be voting on, and I understand we can't pin it down because it's going to keep changing until. We vote on the rate in July. But to look at that, if you have not followed your presentations or any budget meetings or capital plan meetings or anything like that. You really have no idea. What one cent to the municipal tax rate even means.
Other.
I don't know how we could word it or how we can legally put it in there, but. That, that's a big number to vote yes or no on, not knowing why.
We might be able to add something, I think, um. Hmm, we have more.
This is something again, we could put on front porch form, not as part of a giant long informational thing, but shorter thing saying. What is this one percent of the tax rate I agreed about and, and have a explanation? Um, and repost it once a week until town meeting, and the sooner we get it out there, the better, because by town meeting.
Yeah.
Seventy five percent of people are going to vote probably already will.
We can also, we can add something to this page as well with a little more information, because we have a link to a conservation reserve fund page. We could add a blurb here similar to what we added here for the charitable appropriations to talk about. Based on the estimated grand list, eighty thousand dollars, ten dollars per hundred thousand, we could put some information there, I think.
Another piece that might be good, because I've asked the question and I've never received any input in regard to it, uh. And I get it's, it's flexible. But any other reserve. Has a place in the capital plan as to we're raising these tax dollars and this is where it's going to go. Conservation Reserve is, I don't get any input for the capital plan for that.
So maybe we're going to have a whole article or budget, sorry, we have another agenda item after this dedicated to the Conservation Reserve item.
Okay.
We answer that question when we start to talk in more detail about Conservation Reserve.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I get it. Some things just come up. They're not really planned. They just happen.
I think that's going to be after they do their presentation. I think that would probably be a great question for Judy and I think Bob might be here as well. But I'd rather like, let's try to wrap up this agenda item and then get on to conservation after that.
Got the gentleman here from Cots.
I'll call in Fran first then.
All right, just, just quickly, uh, age well, um, I'm coordinator of the drivers for Meals on Wheels. Which serves anywhere from maybe six to fifteen clients. We never know, they keep changing. But that is under age, age well, and they are very, um. Reliant on federal funds, so. It's going to be touch and go for agencies like that, um, this coming year or four years.
Thanks Fran. John, go ahead.
Oh, sure. Thanks. Uh, John Michael Longworth, I'm with Cots and I just wanted to clarify that while. Uh, most of our facilities are located in the city of Burlington. We also have one affordable housing, uh, property in Winuski. That we actually provided services to people in seventeen different municipalities across Northwest Vermont last, uh, state fiscal year. Including four households in Richmond. Uh, and so I just want to just make that clarification that we really do cover. All of Chittenden County, any household, any family that runs into difficulty with housing. Uh, can access Cots services free of charge, uh, regardless of their household of origin. Uh, so just wanted to kind of make that distinction between where we are physically located and where we provide help.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Lisa?
I have a question back for you. Um, you're here, you obviously knew about the meeting, you tuned in. Uh, how did you find out about it? What did you follow?
John.
John, I'm sorry, John. How, how did you?
How did I find out about this meeting?
Yeah, how'd you find out that we're probably going to be talking about something that affects you and you're here?
Yes, uh, so, so Duncan sent an email to, um, all of the folks who've had ballot questions, uh, inviting them to take part in this and the next. Informational meeting, um, and, uh, you know, I decided it was worth the time to get to meet some folks from Richmond and say thank you for your past support.
Glad to hear. Thank you.
Back to you, Josh.
Oh, I'm ready to move on to the next item as soon as questions are done with the budget.
I think questions are done with the budget.
Do you have any passion tips for us upon moving on?
Plaid button downs.
So next we have review and discuss Article eight, shall the town of Richmond vote to approve funding for the Conservation Reserve Fund? By adding one cent to the municipal tax rate in the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six fiscal year. And I do see we have Judy with us.
Hi y'all.
Hi Judy.
Um, here, let me just share my screen. Uh, where is it going? Okay, here. Sorry about that. Okay, um, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I'm Judy Bisavsky, I'm the Chair of the Richmond, uh, Conservation Commission. Um, we make recommendations to the select board about, um. Applications from townspeople for use of the Conservation Reserve Fund. This fund was created in two thousand and five and has been, uh, renewed continually since then, which we appreciate. If you go to the town website, or if you go to the tiny URL on this slide, you can get information about our Conservation Reserve Fund. I did just email Duncan with some updates for what's on the town, but it gives details on each project that the town has funded. And it includes a map showing the distribution of these projects around the town, so they're not. Concentrated geographically, as it turns out. Um. The town plan has a number of places where they, um. Name priorities that have to do with natural resources. Um, and the Conservation Reserve Fund supports implementing these priorities. This is also a really good investment. I know this adds to the, um, tax rate, but for each dollar that goes to the Conservation Reserve Fund. We get almost four dollars back invested in the town, in infrastructure, recreation. Um, helping conserve working farms, historic preservation and general conservation. Um, efforts, so. Um, it does increase the tax rate and it does increase the money that comes into the town, plus leaves us with infrastructure that has been very helpful. Some of the things that we're working on currently, you know, the Andrews Community Forest, um, has ongoing needs for trail infrastructure, for. Um, forest management. Um, for recreational benefits like benches. Um, we are trying to get an assessment of the Winuski River in conjunction with the town. We've been, thank you, Josh, for all your help with that. Um, and also for some of the damage from the floods, um, we're a resource for that and we've been. Working or communicating with trails in the town. On those things, uh, we're also trying to initiate a, a climate resilience project with Leslie Anne Dupinie Giroux from University of Vermont. And then there's Vermont, uh, thirty by thirty legislation to by twenty thirty conserve thirty percent. Of land, so the Conservation Reserve Fund would be helpful for that. Um, we do seem to have a lot of good support in the town for this fund. Which, again, we, us, the commissioners appreciate. Um, this is the, um, ballot wording and, um, Connie, I do understand your concern that. We should be more transparent about the amount of money that's being specified. Um, I have no idea. How we would add that to this article without, um, creating legal issues, but I'm certainly open to. Thoughts on that. And if there are any questions or comments, uh, please let me know and I'll do my best to answer them.
Well, Judy, it's a busy crowd here, but I'm going to give it to Bard.
Okay.
Judy, a couple of quick comments first. Thanks for this great presentation. I will say this illustrates the commitment not only of you to the Conservation Commission. But is illustrative of the reliance of the town on volunteers and various boards and commissions, of which there are many and dozens of. Individuals. Um. So, one specific question, I saw the thirty thirty, kind of definitely aware of that. Do you know, can you answer what percent of Richmond's land is currently conserved? Do you know?
That's a good question. I had thought it was twenty one percent, but I believe the planning commission has a more accurate amount and I. I cannot remember off the top of my head what that was, but I think it was. Higher.
Really?
Higher, um, but it might, you know, you have to figure out. Are you talking about land the town owns, the state owns, or the feds own? So that.
Agencies like Richmond Land Trust.
Right, or private landowners like Richmond Land Trust or Vermont Land Trust.
Yeah, I appreciate the subtlety that is required to answer that question, so. You know, if we're answerable, it'd be interesting to know where we sit relative to that target at some point.
Right, and I can talk to Virginia Clark about that because we, we will need to know that in reference to that legislation.
That makes sense to me. Thank you. And then the other thing I'll say, I, I think, you know, just to state the obvious. This language of the ballot article comes from the town and the town's attorney, so. It's not an accident that looks the way it is, not like Judy proposed this language, um, she may have proposed the idea, but the actual language crafted. As, um, in collaboration with our attorney. To make sure there's no. Flaw or error in language.
Right, and we do publish, um, an information sheet that's on the Conservation Commission website that has that amount. Um, in it.
Thank you, Judy. Connie, go ahead.
Are you muted?
Judy, could you please email me that same list that you emailed Duncan? I think that would be very helpful. And could you and I possibly meet between Monday and Wednesday and find a way to get that into the capital plan?
Um, I am going to Arizona for work Monday. Um, maybe, um, I could ask Bob Lowe if he's willing to work with you. I don't know what you would need from me for that, but I'm happy to. Talk to you later this afternoon or something to see. What that would entail.
Yeah, I'm going to get on with my day after I leave here.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, even if we make it shorter and sweet this year and then build on it. Next year, I think whatever we could slip in would be so great, that it's just another avenue of letting the people know.
Sure.
Of what that money is, is going towards, and we always keep in mind the capital plan is engraved in stone.
Right, thank you, Connie. All great ideas. Um, any other, thank you.
Any other questions? I think we're good. Connie, your hand's still up.
Great, thank you so much, everybody.
Thanks Judy. Are we ready to discuss the Articles nine through seventeen, the charitable appropriations?
Which we've kind of started.
Yes.
Aloha.
Thanks Dennis. So while Josh is getting his notes, I'm going to finish my donut.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Be in touch.
Okay.
On how I might be able to help with like. Just getting more attendance at these kind of meetings.
Cool, that'd be great.
Why don't we take these and the order that they appear on the ballot, um, share my screen just so it's easier for you to follow me along. Okay, so Article nine is shall the voters of the town of Richmond approve. Five hundred dollars to Vermont Family Network to be raised by taxes to provide support to Richmond families with children and special needs. Such amount being reasonably necessary for the support thereof, um. And do we have anybody from Vermont Family Network? I didn't get a response that there'd be anybody here from the family network, but if there is and anybody wants to speak to this article. Now is your chance.
If not, Josh, uh, David, presumably the, um. The submission stands on its own. They, people can look up what they submitted to us, as you pointed out earlier.
Yes.
Okay. So hearing none on my family network, next one is Article ten, which is three thousand dollars to age well.
And Fran just left, so she had spoken to it though. That age well, you know, among other things, is Meals on Wheels.
So this was in my former business, um, age well is one of five area agencies on aging in Vermont with a very broad mandate. Funded heavily by the Older Americans Act, um, which comes from. The federal government, at least it has in the past.
Okay.
Thank you for making that better.
Anything else? Anything else on Age Well? Next is Article 11, $375 to the Vermont Center for Independent Living.
This is Bard. Again, this is like sort of close to my previous home. There is one, every state has centers for independent living. They also are federally funded. There's a couple of funding sources. And that's one organization statewide. Some other states have more than one center for independent living. Based on our population size, we have one. It's based in central Vermont and has a broad kind of mandate.
Thanks, Bard. Any questions on Vermont Center for Independent Living? Okay, next is Article 12, $1,000 to the Committee on Temporary Shelter. I know that we do have John here. He spoke earlier. So John, if you want to give us a brief overview, that'd be great.
Sure, be happy to. First off, I just want to say thank you to the town of Richmond. Since 2019, you've actually been contributing this level of support. And what that looked like in our last fiscal year, we follow a federal fiscal calendar, so ending in September of last year. We had served 2,618 people in and around Chittenden County. That includes 349 children. The way we do that is that we provide emergency shelter, both for adults and families with children. We have Burlington's only Families and Children Shelter, that is general purpose, as well as the county's only year-round family shelter program that we operate out of a couple of sites. All of our clients receive counseling and housing support services, so that's help with applications for new housing, financial coaching, all of the kinds of things that help them get back into new and sustainable housing. And as a part of that work, we also own and operate 114 units of permanent affordable housing based in Burlington and in Winuski. Our most recent addition to that collection was 16 units specifically for families with children that's directly located behind our Main Street Family Shelter in Burlington. We were really excited to get that building off the ground, because it was unique in the county as deeply affordable housing that specifically slotted for families with children in a location where they can get extra support. And then probably the most exciting thing we've got going on right now is that it doesn't look like much yet, but coming this fall, we're going to be converting the former Social Security Building on Pearl Street in Burlington into a very modern, very up-to-date adult shelter that will be completely accessible, ADA accessible, and trauma-informed design. We're really thrilled. It's, our adult shelter is our oldest program. That was founded back in 1983. It is way past time for a refresh to make the building safe and accessible for everybody. So we're thrilled to be able to do that work. With your contribution, that's work that we're doing together. So I just want to say thank you for including us on the ballot.
Thank you. Any questions? Lisa, go ahead.
I've got a comment. The public safety meeting recently, last week, whichever, I was shocked to hear from Sarah George that homelessness is one of the larger contributors to crime, particularly and also in Richmond. There's about 50 people identified throughout Chittenden County who steal cars, sleep in them for a few days, and abandon them, go steal another car, sleep in them for a few days and so forth. And that's, that's creating a crime wave that's really related to homelessness and lack of shelter, so. Where these people come in is extremely important in helping in a lot of ways in our society.
You know, homelessness is
desperation.
Is, is bad. I don't think about you would argue that, but the thing about homelessness being the, a large cause of car thefts, when we, the police go to somebody's house where there's a stolen car and they find four, they're stealing cars, it's not homeless.
True.
And that's, there's quite a few. But that said, homelessness and opioid addiction are some of the biggest causes of a crime. And I don't actually recall what Congress's policy is regarding people who are using, being eligible for staying in their shelters. Do you allow people who are currently using to stay in your shelters?
So we have traditionally been a, a no-use or low-use type of setting. People are never allowed to use substances on our properties. In terms of being admitted into our space, people need to be able to abide by a behavior covenant, be able to conduct themselves, to be able to move themselves safely in and out of the space. And if we are concerned that someone is under the influence in a way that is destructive to the recovery of other guests, or presents a health and safety hazard to themselves, then they are asked to leave the space, and we try to help them access emergency medical services at that time. We've done a lot of work towards being able to minimize the risks at our sites, while at the same time acknowledging that there are probably people that we encounter every day who are under the influence of something, but because of the particular nature of their substance use disorder, we don't, we don't see it, right? We don't recognize it while it's happening, because they're able to manage themselves in space, follow all the rules, and are cogent enough, right, to be able to participate in the day's activities. But we, we attempt to, as much as possible, protect the sobriety of our guests.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any further questions? Okay, Josh, I think we're ready to move on. Thank you, John.
Next is Article 13, our $6,000 to our Community Cares Camp, and we do have Suzanne in attendance.
Somebody to come up for.
That'd probably be best, yeah.
I've been doing it all year up here.
I don't know where you want me to begin or what you want me to say. We're located here in Richmond. Thank you for this opportunity. Also, thank you for all the work that you guys do. Located here in Richmond, we primarily serve mostly, and not exclusively, it's open to the, all the five towns in the district, but it's mostly the heavily, heavy users are Richmond, Bolton, and Huntington, the south end of the district, mostly because Jericho has the Jericho Rec program. Although we have been getting more Jericho kiddos, because our program is a better fit for them. We also have a trauma-informed lens for our camp and focus on social and emotional learning for our campers. This past year, Richmond folks that we serve were 55 individuals between youth and adults. And where I was reviewing last night our property and law statements from the last fiscal years, and, and also speaking with Connie, you guys know Connie Van Egan, she's our treasurer, and we both agreed, it is not a, we don't have a spending problem. We have more of a, a funding problem. We, each year, we're, we're cutting, we're cutting, we're cutting, we're cutting. And it's receiving grants. Even our federal grants have been cut with the SF, the Summer Food Program. We used to be reimbursed between $8,000 and $10,000 each year. Two years ago, that was cut. We received $1,000, and it that was more work than it was worth. It costs more of my time, more of my staff's time, so we decided not to do it. So we went from $10,000 to basically nothing. And I don't want to, certainly don't want to knock the food programs in the school, the universal meals, which is phenomenal, but it's also had a direct impact on us. People aren't filling out the forms. And looking on the maps, Richmond, Underhill, Jericho are not, and Huntington are not considered poor areas. So we, Richmond, this, this school district, I don't want to say has a lot going against it for grants, but, and our camp, we're not considered poor. We're in Chittenden County, so we're not considered rural. We're not really, I know, we're not considered rural, because we're Chittenden County. We're not really diverse, so we have, and the camp, even though we've been typically women-run, we're not women-owned. So when we go to apply for these grants, those are like some of the big top things that, you know, that we, they're weighted, and those kind of go against us.
I have a very stupid question about that.
You can ask.
Well, I mean, this money primarily goes to 501(c)(3)'s, right? Do 501(c)(3)'s have owners as such?
Um, well, women works for women, I think, is-
But I, I didn't know charities, charities are board. They don't have owners.
They're entities.
Yeah, so I'm just going, how can, I mean, if you say you have to be owned by women, it's like, well, that seems like a vicious circle. You, charities aren't owned by people.
Yeah, well.
That's just weird, but, you know, you make, you make, not, I'll, I'll shut up in a second, but you are the source of food in the summertime for a population of very vulnerable children. And it's a shame that because we don't dot the right checkmarks, that they go, oh, no, these kids have all the food they need. That's just sad.
And we also in the last five years, we're also working with the school district. So the kiddos that are receiving extended school year services over at Richmond Elementary, we feed, we also feed those children and the preschool children. So we want to make sure the youngest children in our community are getting nutritious meals, breakfast and lunch, and also kiddos that are receiving their tutoring and those kind of at-risk kids over, over at the school also. I've got all sorts of, which, which we were talking about Front Porch Forum, I was like, oh, I should figure out how to put these up here. And then interesting, I don't know if you, anyone's here has heard of Candid? Anyways, I saw this just yesterday, that across all generations between 2003 and 2021, giving across these generations has declined since 2008, in each stage of life, and individuals are less likely to give than they were in 2003. So in general, the giving has gone down since 2003. And it has gone down dramatically since COVID.
Unfortunately, the need for charity is really, some of it's like a rock.
Yeah, might be opposite.
So. Anyways. Any questions?
Thank you.
I, I would encourage you to post on Front Porch Forum about this, because-
I put a note about that.
Yeah, it's telling that everybody tends to assume, not everybody, a lot of people tend to assume that somebody else will donate. And I don't hate. You get my check every month, but if everybody in Richmond, if even one tenth, one tenth of Richmond donated, you wouldn't have a financial problem.
Yeah. And people who aren't, who aren't big readers, I had put together some quick visuals for people that I think I'll put together on due for like the announcements, so that people can see this is like campers by town for meals served, and you can also see like transportation. The school district is phenomenal with letting us piggyback. They don't have to. Aaron, Aaron is amazing at the school district, and John Elrigini just loves us. He is a huge, huge supporter of our camp. Without the transportation department, we wouldn't be able to do it. And also with Gretchen letting us continue doing this at Campbell's Up, we couldn't do it. We had to pay rent or transportation, either one of those things, we wouldn't be able to do it. We're very, very precarious type.
And you're having to cut back the number of kids you can take, right?
And, and this year, we're thinking about it. Depending on donations we receive this year, we may have to this year. Yeah.
And I'll just ask where your office is.
Our, yeah, our office is right here, and I have to leave the door open because it's amazing. But-
Yeah, I, I always do treasure those moments when we'll be in the middle of some frustrating topic in the Select Board, and all of a sudden you come up behind the screen.
I know.
Pay no attention to the person behind the screen.
By the way, your visuals, great idea. I think people just automatically gravitate to those. You have a bunch of words and a couple of visuals.
Yeah, those are good. I think I'll post those. Are those posted as part of your application on our March 4 Town Meeting Day website?
They weren't. I did, this was just in case I needed something for today. This is four years' worth. I was only asked for two years' worth, 23 and 24, but I pulled up four years' worth just to compare, to see who's the users. And what I suspected in, in anecdotally is true. It is mostly the south end. And Huntington is a huge supporter of us, and so is Bolton. We have many Bolton people that are heavily involved with our camp. We have new board members from Bolton. And people are from these three towns, because they are users, they, they just, they know us, and, and they love us. The north end, they don't know us as well, except for the parents that use us. The parents and families, I shouldn't say parents, but the families that us, use us. I also have like anecdotal, like, like one mom brought me flowers. And she said, without this camp, our family would have, would not have made it through the summer. She cried in my arms. And she said, this camp saved my family in that particular summer. And I was like, wow, that just, whatever we did that summer, that's all it was all worth it.
David, Josh, is it possible for us to post these addendums, if you will, on the March 4 website, maybe below the OCC app?
Send me any additional information in the PDF, we'll post it up. Yeah, because some, some organizations have tons of supplemental information, so feel free.
Yeah, cool. Thank you.
Anything else?
Thanks.
Thank you.
I would, I just would also, I'm sorry, I'm in the PR mindset right now. I would recommend that you ask some of your people who've used your services over the years to post about the difference it's made, not as part of your presentation, but just on their own.
Oh.
Like without the, my family without- I think that would be, I mean, once you actually are seeing people saying, my kids would have basically had no food. It's very hard, I mean, it's very, I don't know that that'll make them get out their checkbooks, but it'd be very hard for them to vote against this on Town Meeting Day.
We did take, in '23, not necessarily last year, I didn't know about it as much last year, but I know in '23, we had some late minute registrations from some schools and teachers and guidance counselors, because we had closed, I say closed, I never say no. Our registration, but the flood happened. And they're, they said, you know, families are doubled up, which we consider in the school district as unhomed. When they're doubled up, that's considered homeless, for some of you who may not know that. So they're doubled up, and they've been doubled up for over a year or two because of FEMA, and I won't even go there. But anyways, you all know that are dealing with it. So we took them, we, we took those families, because the, the parents are struggling. Okay, now what do I do? My home is gone. We don't have a home. What do we do with our children now that we're going to be home with us for the summer? So of course I'm going to say yes. So.
Unfortunately, we don't have anything more behind the screen. Unfortunately, we don't have anything more behind the screen.
Yeah, and then, and '23, when we did have the, the flood, we were closed for a week, although you pivoted in '24, which I almost think was worse with the, the roads. We figured out that we could drive on half of the road, but anyways. OCC did do a pop-up meal site across the road, and with some friends of mine from Palmer Lane and Josh's house, some other places, we had donations coming and, and calls and offers from help from far as way as Maine and California wanting to help.
Wow.
Yeah.
Coast to coast. Well, thank you for all that you're doing.
Okay, Josh, who's next?
We have Article 14, $1,500 to stop domestic violence. Or maybe they have somebody here, although I don't see anybody still here that I don't recognize.
Yep, there's a lot of very good information on their website. In addition to what they put in their application, they serve unfortunately very large population of women and children. They, they may do men too, but I think especially women and children who would have nowhere else to go. And not just, you know, a place to go and food, but all the support services that you need to restart your lives after one of these incidents. I would encourage you by listening, if you have not familiarized yourself with what's on stuff, to consult their site.
All right. Thanks, Jay. And of course, a reminder, there's more information on the website about all of these organizations through their applications. Um, Article fifteen, five thousand dollars to Turning Point Center of Chittenden County. I don't think there's anybody here from there, anybody care to speak on their behalf. Okay, hearing none. Article sixteen, one thousand dollars to Hope Works.
For those people not familiar with Hope Works, if to oversimplify, it's basically the rape crisis center. Providing support for people who have been victims of sexual violence. Um, and I support what they do there. Another, if you don't know about them, they do some amazing work, which again is too bad that they have to do, but I'm glad somebody's there. Thanks, Jay.
And Article seven, one thousand dollars to Lund. As the article describes, it's to um, to help town residents, resident children thrive by empowering families to break cycles of poverty, addiction and abuse by offering hope and opportunity to families through education, treatment, family support and adoption. And more information is available in the request online.
Guess my, my advice to Lund would be they should uh, work with us and kind of raise their visibility a little, I think. I'm not sure many people know that, I think.
Yeah, they they do have that Burlington stick line because that's where they're off. They're lucky. That's where they do love it.
They've been around a long time.
They have been.
Yeah.
Was born there?
No.
All right, and that concludes articles.
Um, don't we have one or two advisory articles for discussion that are not financial?
Um, we do, but this meeting was to cover our shiny valid items.
Okay, okay, good point, right.
Well, thank you for spending your Saturday morning slash early afternoon with us. Josh, thanks for putting this together. Bard, go ahead.
Just uh, you sort of close our next steps. We heard some suggestions about postcards to voters and maybe take that up. Um, and that's a near-term thing, if we do that, or more front porch forum. Um, and we've encouraged some of the other folks that were here today to do their own front porch forum postings and whatever else they want to do for reach out. But I think it's for us to contemplate both this year and then perhaps in next year's cycle more in advance. And that's perhaps another item to talk about somewhere like early fall. How do we want it? What's our timeline here, including outreach and engagement? Uh, and it would be with a new select board after uh, March, but probably at the front end of the budget discussion. What does our work plan look like?
First budget meeting is probably be a good.
Yeah.
Item in that meeting.
And.
Sure.
And anything we want to do this year, you know, we heard uh, from Fran, maybe a postcard, you know.
Yeah.
Contemplate that.
Postcard, what I might be able to do is see if I can get something boxed up next week and then the board can look at it on the eighteenth. And.
Yeah, when do people start having the actual ability to vote?
I I'm not a hundred percent positive, but I think fairly shortly.
So if we are not getting a postcard out till the last week of February, there's not a point doing it. Unless you have drones fly around and deliver it. I know that you've got a lot of stuff on your plate, but if if we, when we do postcards, do we just send a PDF and an address list to some firm and they send them for us? Or are we having a stamping party?
Um, I would probably have a firm do it. I mean, I haven't done a postcard from the town maybe ever, but when we used to do them at the mountain.
Well, we did them for the ARPA thing. We sent postcards.
Oh, we did, yeah.
And.
Um.
Does Linda send out a postcard for the town report? So that might represent an opportunity. Maybe we could hitch our wagon to that horse.
Yeah. And I suspect that without the ballots being mailed, the in-person voting at town meeting on Town Meeting Day will be higher.
And maybe just say where it is online, how you can get a physical copy and, you know, if there's anything else we want to say, maybe links to the March fourth website and.
Or even a QR code.
Because we're going to try to fit it on a pretty small postcard, so you can't say a whole lot.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I love the idea of putting some talking points on there like Fran said, but.
You got that much.
Either six, the presentation to boil down into three ball points. Um, all right, we'll see what we can do and.
Yeah.
I don't know. I can promise much, but I'll check in with Linda to see what she's doing for a postcard because no one just passed. She's done one. That might already be off the printer, but if I can add something to that, at the very least, that could be great to do.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I move we adjourn?
I'll second that. Okay.
Absence any further discussion, calling for the motion to adjourn to be voted on. Please identify yourself and signify your vote.
He said aye.
Bard, aye.
Jay, aye.
David, aye. We are adjourned twelve seventeen PM.
Thanks, everybody.
With you as you can, people.